It started this afternoon, and so if you would, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you all here with us this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from April 9th, 2024. Do they have any questions, comments, changes? None? All right, those amendments will be approved and submitted. Next item, report of the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Black, members of council. Just very briefly, I'd like to follow up on our announcement that Tom Woodard will be joining our staff as Director of Public Works, and his first day will be June 3rd. He's making the transition from Florida to move up here, and will be coming to us during a very busy week in town. And that's all I've got, but I'll be pleased to respond to any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions, just one? All right, appearances before council, let's see. We've got one person signed up this evening, Mr. Hackworth. Mr. Hackworth, if you can come up and give us your name, your address, and remember your comments. We try to limit it to three minutes if we can, okay? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hack, I live on Pantry. I don't particularly like to speak in front of people. I'm hinky up from it. But it needs to be said. I was here about six weeks ago. I asked for an explanation why "In God We Trust" was taken off the police car. I was told that you'd have a meeting the following week and let me know. I haven't heard. I haven't had phone calls returned that I should have had. So I'd like for you to tell me while I'm here.
Okay. Well, when we get to our council comments, if anybody would like to speak to that matter, we'll...
You what?
When we get to the council comments portion of the meeting, we'll...
So you'll tell me after a while?
Yes, sir. All right, next thing, council comments. Todd, you want to start on your end?
Sure. I just want to thank the good group here. Thank everyone for coming. I want to say that I attended with several other council members the police awards banquet. Chief Lewis did a great job there, and it was well-attended. And we had a lot of officers recognized for the great work they're doing.
Yeah, as usual, I appreciate the folks coming to our council meetings. It's important that the citizens participate and let us know what they're thinking. And we do have a lot of really good employees in this working for the town of Bedford, and hope people appreciate all the hard work that they do.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. I think we have two very good budget work sessions, Saturday morning and a little while ago. But I think we've got things resolved where we can move forward. And I want to thank Ann especially for the fine job she's done, worked with staff, getting all this together, and mainly for tolerating us, which is the main thing. But thanks again, and thank you all.
I want to say thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It's always great when citizens come out and come to the meeting because your opinion matters. I want to say that we all attended, most of us attended the police banquet the other night. That was a great banquet that Chief Lewis put together with her, with his staff or whatever. And we enjoyed it. They had some great stuff that was going on there and awards and stuff like that. And then, like I said, I want to thank Bart and the whole staff of the budget they're putting together. They've done an awesome job getting that put together, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what everybody else is saying about citizens coming out. Thank you. Really appreciate it. I had the opportunity to do something I hadn't been able to do in a while, that was walk around and talk to folks who seemed pretty much happy with the way things are going in Bedford. And that was good to hear. That was very refreshing. We're doing some good things. Bedford is moving in a good direction. Budget is coming along great as usual. Had no thought of it being any other way, so thank y'all for the job you're doing. And I would like to address something. Mr. Hackworth, you were here a few weeks ago, and you were concerned because "In God We Trust" was taken off the police car. And we said we will get back to you. And to be honest with you, I talked to the chief, and what you probably don't know is that there were a lot of people, probably more so than you, that wanted him to take it off. And so, but I have a question to ask you.
Okay.
You seem very concerned because he took "In God We Trust" off the car. And what you didn't hear was that there were a lot of people bombarding him about taking that off. They didn't, they didn't, they were bombarding him about taking it off.
Bombarding him?
Yes, right, that you don't know about.
Todd, were you bombarded?
I hadn't, I hadn't.
This isn't about Todd. This is about the chief. This is not about Todd. I'm talking to you, and I'm telling you what the chief said.
Yeah, but you said one thing and I heard another.
But I don't know what you were hearing, but I know what I heard from the chief. His decision wasn't made lightly. He said he took it off, and the only thing that they said, the only thing they were going to put on the police car was what was necessary. That's what they have on their net. Now, the question I want to ask you is this. You believe and trusted in God a long time, haven't you? Haven't you?
Yes.
Have your trust in God diminished anymore since it's not on their car? Have your trust in God diminished anymore since it's not, since you don't see it on that car?
Let me answer you. My trust in God hasn't diminished.
Okay.
My trust in the police, the chief of police, I wouldn't want him to represent my town.
He is representing your town very much, sir. He's representing, and it has nothing about being with God.
What?
But it has nothing to do with God. It was just a decision to make because you can't keep everybody happy. So he said, "Well, we'll just take it off, and we'll only put on our cars what's necessary." And it has nothing to do, he's a religious man just like you are. He believes in God. He's a religious man just like you are. But it hasn't diminished his trust and belief in God because that came off of that car. You wanted to answer, I'm giving you the best answer I can because I talked to him because you were concerned about it.
No, Mark, you were about to... All right, go ahead.
I'm giving you the best answer I can because you seem very concerned about it.
Right.
But this man did what he thought would be the best solution because he had these people that didn't want it on there. They didn't believe in God, but he does believe in God.
Am I right?
I don't know. I don't know.
If I have to...
I don't know, but you know what? I am, no, because I'm tired of people coming up here trying to diminish the work that this man is trying to do and the decisions he made. He did that not because of God. It had nothing to do with God because he believes in God like you do. He trusts in God like, he trusts in God like you do.
I asked him, and he said, "I don't discuss personal beliefs."
And he shouldn't. He shouldn't have to, he shouldn't have to give you a decision on what his religion or anything else is. That's his own personal belief.
He did one and a half.
He shouldn't have.
God says, the Bible says, "If not, then..."
All right, so...
And he's for him. He is for him, but I'm just telling you.
Bob, I appreciate it, and I'll bet you comment, but can we...
Yeah, you asked for a decision, and you asked why. I'm telling you the best answer I can because of what I asked of him. We did what we said we were going to do. I did. I talked to the chief. And that's the answer that he gave me.
Were you through?
Yeah.
I talked through you on that phone.
All right, if you don't mind, really, this is not, I mean, this is council comments portion. You've had yours say, I mean, I'm not trying to, but this protocol-wise, really, we don't need to be going kind of back and forth. We're going to give you...
I've given him his answer. He asked for an answer.
And I'm going to give him one too in just a minute.
Because I did talk to him about this, since he seemed concerned about it.
So, so Mr. Hackworth, you know, we're going to give you an answer. You may not like our answers, but really, this back and forth is really kind of out, really not in our protocol.
He didn't even answer why he took it off. And when I talked to him, I thought he said...
Give me, give me a chance, if you, if you wouldn't mind, let, you know, Councilman Updike and Councilman Updike speak, and then I'll speak, and we'll get you an answer on how...
Personally, that is everything.
Sir, I don't take anything personally.
We got it said. I'll turn it over to the mayor. All right. Mr. Hackworth, you know, I've, I've thought about this issue. And I've spoken to Chief Lewis. I've spoken to Town Manager Warner. I've spoken to our legal counsel. I've spoken to every council member. There was never any policy initiated or on the books for the town of Bedford to require "In God We Trust" on a police vehicle. We, in our, my conversations with everyone I spoke with, have determined that we're not going to institute a policy forcing one of our department heads and overriding this decision. I've been a Christian my whole life. I trust in God. But our police department is here to serve every citizen in this community, whether they're Christian, Jewish, Muslim, a non-believer, it doesn't matter. They're here to serve, protect and serve every single one of them. And for us to sit up here and overrule a decision we give to our department heads to make, that is really not our role. The way the town government works is the department heads report to the town manager, the town manager reports to us. I've got the utmost trust and respect for Chief Lewis and the job he's doing in this community. If you would have heard the stories of, of the Christian compassion and love his officers do on a daily basis. I could tell you two examples that I learned about Friday night. Didn't know about them. A lady got out of jail. She was homeless. She had no food. What did our officer do? He took her, got her some food, and, and made sure she had shelter that evening. On a regular basis, they do everything they can when a citizen overdoses on narcotics to keep that, that citizen alive. It's example after example, day after day, whether "In God We Trust" is on that police car or not. That is what's happening in this community. And so I will leave it to any other council member. If they want us to make a policy decision, they're more than welcome to bring that and put that on the agenda, and we can, we can take a vote. I'm not going to do that because I know the character of our department, and I, and I know the chief is doing everything he can to serve every citizen in this community. So there's your, that's my answer. If anybody would like to add this to the agenda to further discuss it or make some type of policy decision, I'm open to that as well. But if not, then this matter, as far as I'm concerned, is closed. So thank you for your, your current concern. Thank you for your comments. I hope you, you know, I know you won't agree with what I've said, and that's okay. You have that right. But at this point, like I said, I consider the matter closed unless somebody else wants to bring it up.
I'll just add one thing, for what it's worth. My previous employer had a zero tolerance policy on any decals going on, continental trucks outside of the decals they put on there when they got them. No sports teams, no religious statements, no political stickers, nothing. It was my job to inspect the trucks on a weekly basis. If I saw anything like that, it came off. Either the employer took it off or I took it off. So that's the reason for some of this, is that you're not going to please everybody all the time. And it's more to go that route personally. Now, as the mayor just said, we have no policy in place, but at the same time, that's some of the reasons some of that does not go on vehicles. A lot of it doesn't, but I know that doesn't help you much, but appreciate your coming.
All right, any other comments? If not, we'll move to the report of council committees. Don't believe we had any committee meetings since the last meeting? No? All right, revisions to the agenda? Are there anything we need to add? Anybody want to make any revisions to the agenda this evening? No? Okay. All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing. If you'll read the notice on the public hearing, Mr. Warner, for the proposed tax increases.
Notice of public hearing is giving, setting tax rates on real property and certain personal property for tax year 2024, adding a vehicle license fee for tax year 2024, and setting tax rates on the business professional and occupational license, or BPO, tax for tax year 2025. Please be advised that the public hearing on the tax rates will be held on Tuesday, April 23, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the town municipal building, to wit, to set a real property tax rate of not more than 28 cents per $100 assessed valuation for tax year 2024, to set a personal property tax rate of not more than $1.06 per $100 assessed valuation in the town of Bedford for tax year 2024, to set a machinery and tools tax rate of not more than 20 cents for $100 assessed valuation in the town of Bedford for tax year 2024, to add a vehicle license fee of not more than $20 per titled vehicle for tax year 2024, to set a BPO tax on all categories of not more than 10 cents for $100 of gross receipts for businesses in excess of $2 million for tax year 2025, posted by order of the clerk of the town council.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would wish to speak on these tax increases that are proposed with our budget? Just before, I will say that we met Saturday and also earlier tonight. We've been looking at how we can change some of these, and none of these. The only one that will really be voted on this evening is the, I guess, the real estate tax because we're still looking, we pretty much, I think we've reached some consensus on removing the $20 per titled vehicle. We've kind of cut that, looked to cut that out of the budget. The others, let's see. We didn't look at, make any changes on the machinery and tools tax at this point. And we still are looking on the 10 cent, oh, well, I think we've kind of maybe reached a little bit of a... We're still working on the 10 cent.
Okay. With regard to the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, just for, for the record, I would note, we did receive an email from Josh Bond stating his opposition to the machinery and tools tax, and the clerk has a copy of that email.
Okay. Is there anybody that would wish to speak while we're here on any of these matters? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Layton. I live at 750 Peak Street. I attend a lot of these meetings. And I just got to say that I'm being priced out of everything. The Water Board is raising our bill. We just heard that, anywhere from $2 to $4. They have yet to vote on it, but it sounded like a done deal. And, you know, my pension and social security is not going up, but food continues to rise, gas continues to rise, taxes continue to rise. You know, we're slowly being strangled. And, and I understand that budgets are tight in town, but, you know, they're also tight for our retirees and people on fixed incomes. And I just don't see, I'm, I'm hearing, I have a friend who's actually talking about having to leave the country because she cannot, her pension cannot keep up with costs. And I don't know what can be done about it, but it needs something more bionic than is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layton. Anybody else? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Move to the ordinance for the real estate tax rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
The total real estate assessment for the town of Bedford increased by approximately 1.035%. This increase was primarily due to new construction. The proposed tax rate is 28 cents per $100 of assessed value, which is no change from the current tax rate. The total increase in assessed values was $8,457,000. $4,865,000 of that was from new construction. The net assessment increase is .0044 or 0.44%. Tonight, town council is requested to consider adoption of the ordinance presented establishing the real estate tax rate for fiscal year 24, 25.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Haley to set the real estate tax rate at 28 cents per 100 of assessed value.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
This is to the, basically no change in one or...
Correct. There's no, no, yeah, no change in the, in the rate.
And no change in the rate unless their house was assessed of more value, but that's already been done, correct?
Right. Unless there's some, we've made some changes to, you know, something like, yeah.
I just didn't know of any yet, because I've heard that, and Bart may be able to answer that. You, you'd mentioned that there were, the new construction increased, but were there were no, the assessed values were done last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I, if I was correct, we was higher last year, so we're lower this year where we sit last year, so...
Yeah, that's the growth we've seen, is the increase in that new construction.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Bottom line is, we're not raising taxes?
No. There it is, she goes.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, next item is, now, is this one, um... This is the personal property rate. This does include the machinery and tool tax.
No, sir.
It does not, this is just...
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, it does. Machinery and tools is part of this ordinance.
So do we want to go ahead and take action on that tonight, or do we want to see if there's any discussion about machinery and tools tax?
I would, I would ask to make the motion that we table it until our next meeting.
Table it for our next meeting, correct? So let's, yeah, let's do that, then we'll just table this action item. Just in case we see, we find something else that, you know, I think Ann said this, this tax is going to generate about $90,000 for, for the, the budget. So it's, this, you know, we may be able to see if we can tweak it a little bit, or...
Yeah, after the public comment, I think, I think we need to discuss that after the email we received.
Yes, we talked about doing that. Mr. Foreman made a motion to table this.
All right, so we got a motion, a second, all right, and then discussion, I think we got the discussion before the second, I'm sorry. Anyway, let's have a vote to table it.
Ready?
Yes.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, next item is setting the percentage tax relief to exhaust the PPTRA relief funds.
The Virginia General Assembly in 1998 passed the Personal Property Tax Relief Act with the philosophy that relief would be gradually implemented to eliminate personal property tax on personal used motor vehicles. By 2004, the Virginia General Assembly had revised its philosophy and capped the contribution from the Commonwealth to localities for reimbursement for personal property taxes. As a result, the then-city council on November 22nd, 2005, in accordance with state statutes, adopted an ordinance which provided that the funds to be reimbursed to the city of Bedford by the Commonwealth would be allocated in such a manner as to eliminate personal property taxation on each qualifying vehicle with an assessed value of $1,000 or less, and that the council would set annually by resolution a percentage of relief in respect to assessed values of more than $1,000 as applied to the first $20,000 in value of each such qualifying vehicle so as to exhaust fully the PPTRA funds provided to the city by the Commonwealth. Funding and methodology of the PPTRA remain the same upon the reversion of the city to a town. The amount received from the state, $280,647, is allocated toward personal property tax relief in the town of Bedford for fiscal year 2024, 2025. In the prior fiscal year, a rate of 100% on the first $20,000 of assessed value was adopted, and the total relief applied to personal property bills was $462,923.81. Council is asked to consider adopting a PPTRA rate of 100% for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and tonight, town council is requested to adopt the resolution as recommended by staff.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Haley, second from Councilman Foreman. Any discussion? Just remind our citizens once again, we're giving an additional local tax relief up to the first 20,000 in vehicles. So, you know, we're one of the, maybe the only locality still in the Commonwealth that does that, so...
Because we're, because our, we're actually, from what you said, we're, we're spending $160,000 providing, out of the town's budget, to provide that relief.
Right, additional relief over, over what the, the state gives us as $1,000, so...
About $1,800 of it.
So, you know, we were able to keep that intact this year, and that's a good thing for, for citizens, you know, that, that we can continue to provide that extra relief. Hopefully that, you know, can, can stay intact, you know? All right. Roll call.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right. Next item is a motion to go into closed session. Resolute to 2.2-3711A3, the Code of Virginia of 1950 is amended for the acquisition or disposition of publicly held real property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position. This is in regards to some land around the reservoir that the water authority has made a kind of an offer in regards. So we have a motion to go into closed session. So, we have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the council.
Summary.
We got a motion from Councilman Haley, a second from Councilman Carson, a discussion, roll call.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven miles.
Before you adjourn, do you need another budget work session to discuss rates?
To discuss the machinery and tools tax.
And if so, you just need to adjourn this meeting until the date other than your next council meeting.
Y'all want to, because we need to adopt those probably the next meeting, don't we?
I mean, you could wait till the next council meeting to talk about it, just...
Y'all want to just do that, because I mean...
You mean come in like we did today and do that?
Well, or even just in the regular part of the meeting have a discussion about...
That's my question if you'll...
Really just a discussion about the machinery and tools tax and if there's...
I wouldn't do that at regular meetings.
Yeah, why would you just do that at regular meetings? All right, so we're adjourned.